Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Lakefront Park City Council Work Session for June, for Thursday, June thirteenth. We're here emotionally for adoption of the agenda.
No move? Second.
Spin move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any next. Nice habit. Thank you so much, council. Tonight, we have Resolution twenty-four nineteen fifty-seven operating the mayor's signed agreement for consultant services with facet for the phase two lakefront improvements for design, engineering, environmental and permitting project. So we will kick off with that. Who is?
Where can we come up?
Sure, please. Take a seat at the table. We've got plenty of room wherever if you're think you're visible there or here is twenty-two.
Close to the mic?
Yeah, maybe closer.
Well, Owen was sitting.
We can give a bill.
Yeah, we can give the count.
Yeah, we can just ship those a little bit. Because we can get four grants here. You guys? Well, we're gonna start off with this and then let's see, we now, actually, that's all we have.
She'll be quiet, I don't know.
You know, with this, we're getting our seating arrangements sorted out.
So sorry you took water shot out of your thing, though. Facet water shot there.
Welcome, John.
Yeah, officially it's facet northwest.
Okay.
I accidentally keep saying faucets.
Works with the water, right? Well, what would you like to kick off?
Yeah, so, um, we are almost floating phase one and ready to go into phase two. And we're here to discuss the scope proposed for phase two to continue the Lakefront Park project. And I think talk about budget and answer any questions that you guys might have on this first touch.
Great. Well, do we, council, how would you like to proceed?
If you want to.
Sure. So when we initially interviewed for this project, it was in response to an R F Q that the city did issue for a complete comprehensive suite of services from project origination through design, through detailed design and construction documents and through construction. At the time, that discussion was that we really could not put the scope in place to those later stages of work because the design was unclear. And so what we proposed to the city was that we start off with a rigorous engagement phase to come up with a design that summarized the city's needs and values, hopefully, priorities in a articulated design for the use of this property. And then we would provide a schematic design document and then a scope and fee of what would take to move that forward. So we have the that design and the scope of the work that was completed through phase one described in the schematic design document, which you all have a copy of and which is available for the public to see online. And then we have the scope of work that would be the proposal to do that work as it's described in the document. So that includes the studies that would be necessary, the consultants that would be engaged, the step-by-step of work. It does follow a model of this first phase. So meetings with quarterly meetings with both the parks board and the council, public workshops and continued outreach through engagement events and through the same similar campaign that we've done, but just as we would have signed forward. It does include also a timeline for that based on what we know about permits that will be required, likely permitting timelines, and then the deliverables that will be necessary to provide in order to submit those permits and get conclusive results back. So we have that in front of everyone. We also have the opportunity to answer questions, to revise, to cost manage, to add or take out based on how the council is feeling from this proposal. So essentially, we are at the conclusion of phase one. Our last project manager's meeting will be on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, and then that satisfies our scope for phase one. So that's where we are at.
Council, questions about the phase two or closure of phase one? So. That's more real.
Oh, I didn't miss this, but what is the timeline that you were expecting for phase two to complete?
Sure. So we were anticipating basically July twenty twenty-four through January of twenty twenty-six. And the goal in that time was basically to get us from where we are now, which is schematic design through producing plan documents, getting our permits while applying and then getting our permits and then getting to a point where we had a bid issue packet issuing that bid in December and then or January and then essentially having a lull with a big period where the official part of the phase would end in March with the new scope of contracted work for C A for the next phase. And so there again is that period of we can do our best to estimate the costs that we will receive from contractors. It tends to be a favorable bidding window in the winter time. We tend to get lower bids in the winter time than we often do when we bid out in the summer. And so we'd like to target that. So that's the way. That also aligns with the work window, which is a good place to be. It gets us to a point where we can kind of move that work forward, get to the summer window and then get to the the winter window as well. And so that's how that's all laid out. That said, because we don't have the contractor's bid, we don't have the breakdown of what's the base bid versus amendments to the bid through this next phase of work. We can't put a price on what construction administration, construction management will be because we don't have a sense of the timeline because again, we haven't gone to bid. So step by step, continuing with the approach that we outlined for phase one.
Thank you.
When, when do we expect to hear from the state about the grants? Are there our grant applications?
Sure. Um, our, well, our C O will be, that's a year out is when we'll hear what funding we would be awarded.
Oh, really? So.
So wait, wait, right. Our grant manager let us know that if we are awarded the funds, the funds will be available in July twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Sometime later this summer.
Yeah. So we'll know if it's awarded later this summer, then?
That is the intention. I know late summer.
Okay.
Yeah. The final presentations for the grant are late August, and so it is later in the summer than late.
Okay. So we've had, Corey, as I understand it, initial presentations to them, correct?
Technical.
Yes.
Yeah.
So then what wonder is there? Is is the next step in the process that we would make a subsequent presentation or they would ask us questions or just curious what the process is?
Yeah. So the first round is our technical, which they we presented and they gave us feedback of what to throw on or what they would like to see. And then we are going back to August for the final presentation. So we have time to adjust. But they told us, bring them updates of the project. And then that will be the final.
Any thoughts on their comments so far?
Um, I know Alia has some good funding, but that's only five hundred thousand. And our C O is excited about our project. I know that in the water access that, you know, getting our full request is not likely, but I think we are good to go on, you know, a good portion of what we're asking for. We do have some work to do on minimizing our requests because there is, there's only a certain amount of money. We have to work with our grant manager on that, but.
Good.
Thank you.
One question. So the the budget for the later budgets are going to be in phase three when you have an idea for because you look like you're going to be doing an R F P and later, and so will the will the bids come in during phase three?
So we would expect, so essentially, we know that this project is going to go out to competitive bid. And so what we would go into that knowing is what our outside cost estimator would price the design at based on the plans as they're drawn. So they would use their expertise on what the bidding environment is like and what the work is likely cost to say, we think that in a competitive bid environment, you are likely to get a bid in this range. Then we will put it out to competitive bid and we will allow contractors to price it. You know, depending on how many bids we get back, sometimes you get one that's way high, one that's way low, and then the goal is that the rest of them all have some degree of parity. Now, it is on the consultant and the city to communicate about what establishes qualification for those bidders, but the city will be required to select the lowest qualified of those or the lowest bid of the qualified bidders. And so sometimes that is the suspiciously low, depending on the qualifications. Hopefully, it is one of the, you know, kind of the lowest of the pack. And.
Qualified.
Right. Qualified is the key, is the thing.
I understand.
So we'll have to, we work together to make sure that those qualifications are clear and describe the complexities of this work. So working around the lake, working in a highly regulated regulated environment, understanding, you know, archaeological monitoring and those types of protections, understanding erosion control. We have a lot of good contractors in the Pacific Northwest that do this work. We've seen, you know, beautiful projects just in Kenmore and other places recently. So we hope that this will attract a good amount of bids and then hopefully get the best, you know, competitive price for the city. That said, we don't know what they're going to say. So we'll do our best to prepare the city for, you know, expected something in this range, but it could come in higher or lower than that. And once that's the case, uh, once we get those bids, then it would be the city's, you know, decision as to whether you're doing the base work, whether you're adding add alternates, if those were things that we had had provided. So even though we said solar panels, great, put them in, you know, generators, great, put them in, and we gave kind of the highest cost that we thought was reasonable for this project so that you have those as options. Those ultimately can be things that are cut. So right now, we have the sort of Cadillac of park plans represented in the current assessment for the sake of setting the bar for what the what we're going to request for grants with the hope that as we learn more about the landscape that we get into, as we learn more about the design, as we move a little bit farther forward, we can refine that price and we have asked for enough. What we don't want to do is say, well, we don't want it to cost that much, so let's ask for less and let's hope for less and then realize that we didn't ask for enough until it's a grant later on. So the goal is to leave you guys with flexibility and control.
They're preparing for success.
That's it.
Very explanation. Council, believe me.
Uh, thank you for the discussion. I'm gonna follow up. You had mentioned alternatives, and I think alternatives are appropriate when bidding projects like this. But in general, I would two questions. Are alternates part of your scope of work to develop as part of the phase two? Meaning, is it already in your cost to develop alternatives? And sometimes the range of alternates may be five or ten percent, which the city would staff would sort of say, in concert with you, what is an appropriate value that should be established, that's it. Range for alternatives. And second, I would strongly recommend that they be additive. The reason for that is that there's a psychology about, I'll give you fifty cents back on a dollar, but it will cost you a dollar to pay it. So in generally, you'll find that additive alternatives will lead to better results.
So yes, the way that we basically wrote the scope was, this is a snapshot that shows what can be afforded with the scope and fee that's provided. If you take something out, we usually can contend with that in the scope of what we provide. If you add anything else, then we're likely not included in the scope. So as long as the additive alternatives are things that are already represented in this and pulled out, then yes, that is included in this and we'll be working at each all, each milestone. So the fifty, seventy, a hundred and issue for construction set to to work with the city to decide what's appropriate to include at that point as an additive alternate. And again, it's the, we tried to put as much stuff in here so that this was comprehensive so that anything could come out, and this is still true.
Okay. So if I understand you, that you will work through the design phase to identify what those additive alternates would be, and they represent part of the scope. So there's not additional costs for you to actually develop the documentation.
Yes.
Put out the.
That's correct.
Oh, exactly. Questions. Let's go over to. Thank you. And thanks for the presentation and the wonderful packet. The question I have is, there's something on each of the portions, including facets, there's a fairly lengthy section on assumptions, which I really, really do appreciate. Are there any in your estimation of unusual assumptions that are made guided by you or any of the contractors for this particular project?
Um, I would say the assumption that is typical for a project that is this highly regulated, but is atypical on other non-highly regulated places is that we haven't interpreted, we have interpreted based on our expertise, what those regulators will allow. However, they may interpret it differently depending on the planner that we get and the concessions that they are asking for. So we have a lot of experience working with regulators and who they view as preferred commenters in terms of allowing some guidance in terms of what they're going to ask for back. But the nature of those discussions that we're not privy to, where they get to talk about and discuss and then get back to us with what they're going to ask for are somewhat unpredictable. And so sometimes we may have one agency that says, yeah, this is great. And then we may hear from the other agency that says, we think you can do a little bit more. And that is something that's unfortunate.
Yes, absolutely. Great. So this is because we're dealing both with state and federal regulators?
State and federal regulators. We also have tribal nations that are preferred commenters. And, you know, the nature of this site is dynamic. There's a lot of different overlapping regulation in terms of how those things work together. We can assume that this is a favorable design based on what we know that the core approves in other places. But when the core reviews it, they may feel differently about some elements of the design, and so we may have to work with them to make a change. Now, we have been proactive in some of that outreach. We have had discussions. We have looked at other similar projects, including the ones that the city, you know, directed us to look at as comparative examples as well as others. And then we also know this reach of the lake very well. So we believe that this is a feasible design that's likely to pass muster with regulators, but we can't say that for sure until we put the design in front of them, including the rest of that packet of information that they want to see. So things like the critical areas report. We understand that it'll need mitigation. We have a good idea of what that mitigation can be. We have a lot of options for mitigation. But we may make a proposal and they may ask for an additional concession. And so that's again, something that is an assumption in Facet's proposal that we think it's likely to be approved. We think it's a feasible design based on our interpretation, but we can't guarantee that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks. So I have a question about the scope of work for phase two and the safety analysis. This is on page thirty-five of the packet. It talks about making recommendations for pedestrian and bicycle routes between city hall and the park. And I just want to make sure I understand that. So this includes specific engineering ideas to make the intersection safer things for watch dog or sound transit to do as part of the B R T project, that sort of thing?
Yeah. So the scope of the construction drawings would not include intersection improvements, but we understand that a critical component of this park is the fact that it will feature off-site parking using the existing Lime Creek parking that is already at the city hall. And so just working on our side of that project line does a disservice to what the full extent of the actual use area will be. And so when we did the initial analysis for this project, you know, we had the conversation with the city council and with the Parks and Record about what is the boundary for this project? You know, when we, when we went to the interview, it was like, it's these two parcels. And it's sort of like, well, it's actually also the next door and also beach drive and also the intersection. And so like, we really need to look at the whole thing. And so while we've decided that the construction scope will be the park properties, that analytical scope and the recommendations extend all the way out. So there will be right-of-way improvement drawings that are provided as part of this project. So the park project, yes, the right of way, all the way down to the tie-in to the sidewalk, because we need to make sure that people are getting to the park safely from the Burke building and from this side of the intersection. But then there's also going to be analysis by the transportation engineers of the intersection and the movement through that area. So some of the things that they mentioned to me were modifying recommendations to modify the dimensions in a more specific way rather than what they had provided as an early sort of, you know, phase one recommendation. If you make this change in geometry, you can allow a U-turn, you put it signage. They're gonna like, you know, dial that in a little bit more about lane widths. They talked about things like signal timing. They talked about things like additional striping, additional signing, actuated signaling. I'm not a transportation engineer. It was kind of a lengthy list. I do have a comment because I knew that you posted this comment to Corey early on and she brought it to me. So I did get a a response from our traffic engineers that I'm happy to forward.
Yeah, thanks. And yeah, I very much appreciate a more holistic approach to make sure people can safely get to the park. It's sort of real. We were waiting patiently.
I kind of have three, two comments for you and one for probably our city. Most of here. So one of the items that wasn't included is the salmon safe certification. I know we, I've looked at that for other construction projects. Is that because this isn't one that would be useful to have that like applicable to that certification?
We did include it.
Okay. It's a misassumption.
But you said you, we did or didn't?
I said I did. At least I sort of looked like to have been.
I thought we did include it.
Yeah, I was very, there was a miss. That's my apologies. Okay, it's a typo. Yeah, we put in. So we discussed with Corey the potential for sustainability potentials. And what we decided on was basically an additional service presented that is task six. We're not, yes. So task six, additional services that these would be the if if there is a reference to salmon safe not being included early on in the proposal, I'll do a word search and look and see if that's in there. That might have been.
It's because it was listed as an additional service. I didn't know that was, okay.
I think it's if included in the project. I was just curious.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. So yeah, so it is included in the we basically have sustainability credentials. Yeah, is the seventy-six, five oh five. And so what we provided as this scope is the option of what what programs could be suitable for this site. So that includes three U S G V C. That's the U S Green Building Council. So they're the administrators of LEED, which is leadership in in energy efficiency design. And that they have a new buildings category and existing buildings category. And then they also have what's called the Sustainable Sites Initiative. So this is for non-developed landscapes. And then salmon safe certification, which is more of a regional certification that's gaining steam. It's very specific to our area. There's a lot of early adopters of this spoken and Microsoft, and now it's becoming required in more places. So we do have the benefit of someone on the project team, Chuck, who you guys know, being a salmon safe evaluator. So he knows the program very well. To do any of these, we basically need to get the entire team working to know that we're following that certification from the beginning of the project. So if you pick all of them or if you pick one of them, we will need to have a regular recurring meeting with all of the project partners. And then there's the, you know, fees associated with this program, documentation associated with this program. So if you look at this long table page here. Yeah. So, right. So it is at the very bottom of the column. You can see where we've put in here the estimated program fees and it'll say non-contract. So they're zeroed out in the contract value. But the administration fees of what it will cost the team to do that, do that certification is included. So the team sustainability meeting, six point one. If you're wanting to pursue any of the listed certifications, you would be required to have that six point one item. Then you basically can pick from a menu of the documentation associated with those others. And then the fees for each program, since that's, you know, part of this, okay, we're going to pay you to administer this program, but then what's our out-of-pocket to the actual program for the certification cost? Those are not listed in the total because they don't represent consult fees. They represent expenses like a first meet. And so those are listed, though, just for your reference in that description, the task title column. So know that if you do elect for any of those certifications, the full cost to the city and we will require more of Corey's time because there'll be a lot of paperwork that she would have to do as the project manager to be working on that, those things with us. You'd have to be in like the lead portal and all that stuff. So so just know that the consultant fees are included as task six and they are noted in the main contract total as that, you know, ad service line for the optional service. But there would be more fees that the city would be kind of beholden to if they decided to fully finish those certification programs. And that would be the fees paid to the certification agency and then the additional staff time related to that task.
Two questions. When would we have to decide which certifications we want to get?
Um, so.
Sounds like early on.
Yes. So for the case of salmon safe, because it is a program that came about, I don't want to get the number wrong, but I, it's, it's not as old as LEED. And so because it is a newer program, even though it's not brand new, it's definitely been around for a little while. They're used to kind of people who suddenly found out about it and wanting to bring their project up to, you know, salmon safe certification. So you can apply it as a little bit more of a retrofit, but the preferences and it is easier to qualify if you're looking at these things through the design. Lead and sites, there are things like, did you do public engagement? Did you investigate, you know, keeping onsite soil? So these things that if you didn't do and the opportunity has passed, you cannot get those points. And so it does make it more difficult, sometimes not possible to attain those credits if you start too late in the game. It does make it much more expensive. Because right now, this is priced as if during that design phase, during that week monthly meeting that we're having, everybody's inputting their information from the current stage of their work. If we're eight months post and then I'm saying, I need that form from your looking at this vendor, you know, then all of a sudden there's this extra time. It's essentially like an R F I during construction where I'm asking them to find a bunch of documentation that they don't have handy. And so it can be much more expensive. So I would anticipate if we said, don't include it at this stage and then decided halfway through the project that we wanted to do, one of those more rigorous programs like LEED or sites that the change order cost from specifically some of our engineering subs and then others would be higher than is represented in the current scope.
Do you have a recommendation to reach certifications? Kind of cost effective?
Sure. I would say that these are, it's a, it's a values question, right? So it is a it's a thing about, you know, living what's important and then celebrating and advertising that. So I definitely have clients who say, we want to be a living building firm. Challenge. It's the most rigorous standard. We want to do that, but we know we're not going to pay for it. So everything that we do, we look at using those criteria and we can move forward saying this would have been one of those projects if the client had decided that the value was in the sign that you get and the notoriety that you get. Now, this being an example project for the city, it is one of those things where, you know, is that, is that part of what's important is to be able to have, you know, a lead, a lead plaque on, on these buildings or to have this be, you know, one of the earlier site certified parks in the Pacific Northwest. Those mean something. And so I think that's just the question is, does it console in terms of the, you know, the value that's represented in the cost? And then what the city needs.
My last question is, Amber, are you going to stay with this project?
I am committed to this project.
I just, that is exactly what I wanted to do.
Yes. No, my, my daughter will be at the rooting funding. Or you will, yes. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, leave it.
Just to follow up on council member bodies, I would suggest that as a city, we want to pursue the exposed salmon safe but as a representation of the values that we have as a city as well as leaders. My suggestion. Um, help me understand how we're going to pay for this because as I read it, the phase two is one point one nine million. And there's something about we have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If we authorize this contract as is, we are authorizing one point one million dollars. And so I would like to understand how we're going to pay for that because there are options that you authorize portions of it as you have funding available. So it's not unusual to have a design contract that says, I award you in parts and from an organization that we had three parts. And so there were two design phases and then a construction phase. So you were awarded in this part, you would award the one point four nine dollars all in the beginning. So if I could understand how the administration proposes to phase with this, recognizing that I wouldn't recommend that we authorize something for which we don't have the full funding value of that contract.
I know Corey has some updated information. So let her go first.
So I'll start with, just to begin this phase two for the twenty twenty-four years, I asked Amber to pull out what we would need to continue this in twenty twenty-four. So that five hundred and seventy thousand is what we need for this twenty twenty-four year. I think that we have the King County Parks Lovey Funding saved for the last two years, which is like two hundred eighty-eight thousand. And unfortunately, I only read that we're getting some R C O funding, but it's only twenty-two thousand, not twenty-two hundred. So we have about three hundred and ten thousand dollars I know of to start this phase two. And I have put it into a budget. Um, and I have put it into a budget amendment to go on when that is being proposed. And this will be um, when we do the budget cycle for next year, it's to be implemented.
So in the capital improvement fund we discussed this before, we have roughly two point five million dollars anticipated ending fund balance in twenty twenty-four. This is money for REIT, it is money for the parks levy, it is reimbursed, so we've got the RCO and others. That all goes into that safe pot, this is money that we use to design parks and group parks, buy park property. That is, like I said, that is about two point five million dollars to take time down, so you can find that in your adopted budget. Um, the five hundred and whatever thousand dollars that we need through the end of the year is in your budget amendment tonight. Very good, I'll discuss that with you. Let's add that to your question, the dollars are there, the whole dollars are there, none of those dollars currently are committed for anything.
So I would ask that the administration outline that in the resolution about how you propose to pay for it. Because if you're proposing to only authorize essentially five hundred and seventy thousand this year. Then the contract should be written to say, we will authorize five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the authorization for the remainder will come at a future date.
Yeah, with the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Which is fine, so I've written a lot of contracts that have multiple parts to them, and you just authorize it as, for whatever reason. Uh, you, you want to phase it either because of cash flow, or you just want to have control of the cash so that you can still authorize. So I'd like to see what the funding plan is and how you propose to authorize.
The same lines, one of the other questions I had is, or total project cost from a fees and all the other stuff. Have we, do we have a good handle on that budget? That's because that's not necessarily something that's with a consultant, that's outside the costs that we have to incur. Do you have something really buttoned down to total project cost contingencies for the fees?
You're talking construction or design?
For, for the construction estimates.
Or not for construction estimate, I mean, as far as um permits, we won't charge ourselves permit fees, but any outside agents and.
Yeah, because I think when we get to the estimate that your group is providing, there's still that other chunk of money that we have to understand as the total project cost and the. There's a sequence of chunks of money.
Yeah, we will do that at that time, and yeah, that's when we have to identify what grants we got, you know, the federal and the state level. And what that gap is. But yeah, I mean, anytime we do one of these projects. Permit fees are first, definitely.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you're already thinking about holding out your contingency aside to recognize. Construction issues, again, as we're planning for what this total budget is, as we're authorizing the money and knowing that we have enough to cover it. I think that would be feel better, it's like, do we have a total project cost? Contingencies and all that extra owner cost in addition to sort of the initial estimate that you've got now, that you're getting more and more refined of the process as well.
Okay, so, so we do. Uh, yes, so um, it would be, uh. Right, so it's in the other packet, so um, there is in the schematic sign packet, if you go to page forty-five, there is the cost estimate. Um, and this includes as the front part of this, a description of some of those additional things, uh jurisdictional costs and permits, architectural and guarantees, um, other consultants. Okay, um, and then uh special inspections and commissioning and what those are. So that was, we felt like that was important to have a breakdown of what um, what you guys would, would be including. And then you can see on the next page, forty-six. There is an estimated construction cost with markup and escalation, and then the anticipated project cost.
Thank you.
So you will see that this is higher than it was in the last meeting that I came to. And that is because if you look at additional service, additional structural reinforcement, violence required, five hundred thousand. That is, five hundred thousand is what our structural engineers said it would cost. When I told that to the cost estimator, they said, we have to put it through the same formula that we put everything through, which is a markup and then a markup and then another markup. And so, so it may be, right. Now, I was like, but what if it costs five hundred thousand? And he said, it probably will, but I have to put it through the same formula. And so if you go through to our cost estimate, which is um in the back of your packet, it's back section, the other page six. Um, you can see that the markups that are applied are represented as the owner's soft cost. So these are things that are not the construction cost. Um, that the city will be paying, which includes the jurisdictional costs and permits, based on this being a heavily regulated project. Our cost estimating professional said, you should expect to pay seven percent of this. Now, this includes the cost of the permits plus the permitting. And so that is why it is higher. So A and E fees, that's all described on that earlier page, um, the beginning of the section, what's included in there. That includes some of the professionals in this proposal, but not all, others are included in other consultants. Administration costs, that's like Cory and other things that the city will pay for. Special inspections, some of those are included in this packet, and all of that's described on that earlier page. So then there's also, you can see here, an owner's contingency of five percent, so that's what did you not see coming that comes up? And then the sales tax, now, we don't, you won't pay sales tax on our fee. So already, we can see that a ten percent application to the A and E fees is an overestimation. But this is, um, we don't have any plans for this project, it's a schematic design estimate, so it all goes through the same formula. And then the next time that you get a pricing update from us, it will be based on drawings. Which means that it will be that much more real, and then we'll have an actual real conversation about where, what we might want to pull out as add alternates. Those types of things. Um, and I would, I would um advise. That uh when add alternates, the way that we scope this, get expensive is when we say, pull it out, and then we say, put it back in. And so it's one of those things where if we decide that the bathroom is coming later, we then say, okay, the bathroom is a add alternate. So what happens to the space before the bathroom goes in? Okay, well, we'll have, you know, utilities put in, but they'll be capped and there'll be, you know, paving there that'll have to be removed. And so it's those types of decisions that we want to make once. Um, once the bathroom is separate and that other thing is in the plans. It's change order land, when we start saying, okay, now take all that stuff out, right, revise the one that's back, put that back in, I think. Right, so um, so we would advise, yeah.
We don't do change orders enough to.
Right, so we would advise um that we start saying, you know, this is a good option for, for an add alternate at the next stage. And kind of keep it in, and then oftentimes, it is when we go from the hundred percent cost estimate to the bid set, that those add alternates get put out. Now, if we know that something is just not attainable in the construction funding that you guys will have, then we do want to pull it out early. Otherwise, it is one of those things where that last number, the plans are complete, selected finishes, we've selected all of those things. Um, and we have our permits, we know what the final changes are, we got a good number. And we want to make it a little bit less. That's what we would recommend pulling out the add alternates.
And we still have to, like, go through all this with Scott, look at maintenance wise, like, I'm pretty knowledgeable of what he handled, but he.
So, so there are, there's an exhibit for him to speak to and comment on.
He'll get it. So, thank you for the questions, I appreciate it.
But I do want to, council member Riddle makes a very good point, which is, the city, we should have our own budget. And so when we talk about this. Uh, it's not a nine point three million dollar project, which is the construction value, it's a fourteen or fifteen or sixteen million dollar project. So I would encourage, I would. It is a practice, it's not even a best practice, is to have your budget for the overall project that shows the items that are described, for example, on page. Six of the cost estimate. That the city is tracking separately from what the design team is tracking. Because owner's contingency of five percent for the total project cost, it will probably find not be adequate at this level. Particularly if you want to add things that are not yet priced into, think like to design costs for certification, such as exam. So. The state has plenty of examples, other municipalities have plenty of examples, so what an open budget, like. And then we should always talk about what's the total cost of the project. It's too easy to talk about the construction cost, because often times we will talk about cost estimates in terms of construction costs, but that doesn't represent the true cost of the project. And it even gets even more expensive when that financing costs. And that should also be continued, so when we say to the public, because you will get. Uh, the public will come out and say, well, if you're financing it through interest bonds, the total value of the project is not fifteen million dollars, it's eighteen million dollars over the life. And if you don't address it early on. You would get. Shall I say, you will get that feedback, maybe.
That's where we're going. Yeah, thanks, uh, so earlier on tonight, we talked about state grants and timelines there. Uh, in addition federally, Representative Jaya Paul put in a five million dollar appropriations request, which is very new, so. Just wondering, what's the timeframe for Congress to act on that?
I do not know.
And I do, I actually got a paper that you made to find out everybody timeline.
But recall that this year's budget was only approved. Uh, a month ago. Last year's.
Yeah, last year's budget.
Last year's budget, yeah, so.
Right.
There's the goal. Because of the continuing resolutions, you know, so.
And Larry, on point two, I received a, a note from Councilmember Dombowski saying. You know, let's, let's get this, this project built uh earlier on, on here, I know he's very committed to trying to find additional resources for us.
I just want to say, Councilmember Dombowski has really done great in helping out for this park, but also for just community amenity, it's like the senior center. So it's, it's so notable. Because there's practically, I don't know that there's anyone else who looks out for us as much as he does. So we should give him an award or something. Especially if he comes through with some.
Well, he's been, I mean, this project has moved forward because of his, his initiative project. So we have about a couple more minutes, colleagues, before we move upstairs. That's a very fair point.
And just going back to the um LED and sites uh designation. Um, I very much, uh, David from this council member Lebo was, um, it looks like if I'm looking at all the numbers that are yellow. The numbers basically that are nineteen, Alex, the cost is supposed to be roughly about seventy-two thousand dollars, which. I don't know if I'm super far off, getting, not being math, that's a hell of a thing, but uh, the point being that uh, that. Us, it seems like uh just the special achievement, that's cheap and that.
Any thoughts, anyone, or? I agree, colleagues, too, that I think that the certifications make a lot of, a lot of stories, we forsaken the ground long ago about our environmental commitments and this makes a lot of sense.
I, I will say that the, you know, the checklist to do the work, but not go through with the certification, doesn't just say you invite the flag, but the amount of effort it takes for the contractors to keep that paperwork for consultants to go through the. To be a third of the cost of the certi- of, of, of the upcharge of getting a LEED certified building, it's just such, because it's manpower, manpower is expensive. Um, so using it as a guideline and being, you know, a lead. Targeted project kind of thing might be better for us, it just impacts on what part of value and how much we want to put, uh, where we want to put our money. Yeah, and I think, and like we've talked, uh, the salmon one, I think is high on our priority, and then we pour things out elsewhere. But, you know, we can show that the project is still environmentally friendly. To education, even if we don't have certificates.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I like to, yeah, like, do what Councilmember for kind of said, that on political grounds, you know, we'll be approving the finance actually planned later tonight, and so I think it dovetails nicely. But also on financial grounds, that assuming that the Councilmember for Congress math is correct, it's less than one percent of the total project. And so cutting it out isn't really going to save us an appreciable amount of money. So I think on both policy and financial reasons, we should keep it in.
So I do want to note that on um page fifteen, so that additional, additional optional services, that's the seventy-six, that is the consultant fee. So that doesn't include those program fees, which are not um, a, a large, you know, um. They're, they're less than the seventy-six, they're outlined on the other uh. Outline on that tiny column, I haven't added those together, but that would be in addition to, it's like twelve thousand plus sixty-seven hundred plus eight thousand, um. Less.
Quick, I mean, even if the total is about a hundred thousand, that is still roughly one percent. And so it's, it's still a relatively minor fraction of the total park project.
It depends on what funding we get, so.
Right, colleagues, we are pretty much at time, any other last thoughts or questions for the team? Hey, baby number three?
One thing to add, um, so when we came in for our interview, we um asked uh the committee to do kind of a postcard exercise, which is that we handed out a postcard from the new park. And so we've updated that postcard and have a handful of designs here, so I don't know if you guys want to pack it around, take one, um, there's a raised on here. So the, the exercise at the beginning was to imagine this place is finished, and so, you know, sending a postcard from, from where we will be when it is done, so. They are the cities, whichever ones you like.
Okay, if there's something else for the given order, we are adjourned upstairs, thank you, everybody.